Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of your Westland City Council order. We will be led tonight in the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Jim Hart.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Present.
Councilman Hart.
Here.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Here.
Councilwoman Rakowski is absent, excused. Councilman Wishart.
Here.
Pro Tem Sampi.
Here.
President McDermott.
Here.
Acquorum, Mr. President.
Okay, we do have a couple of special announcements and presentations tonight, but before we get to that, I did want to make a statement. I've let some of my colleagues on council know that I would be saying this as well. Obviously, this weekend, we experienced a horrific event and a shooting at a political rally for former President Donald Trump. And we want to be clear, I want to be clear as council president, and we all want to be clear as your public servants and elected officials, that violence has absolutely no place in our politics. And we know that the rhetoric has gotten heated on all sides and that there is legitimate debate and discourse and discussion to be had over the issues. But that cannot be resolved via violence. Whether that is at a rally that people are peacefully attending to support a candidate of their choosing, like Donald Trump, whether that is on the steps of the Capitol in Washington, DC, or that is in any community, on a street in any community, where people are organizing to express their right and their choice on who they support politically. Political violence has absolutely no place in our society and is completely abhorrent and unacceptable, and we condemn it in the strongest possible way. And we hope that no matter what side of the aisle you fall on, no matter what your opinion is on a particular issue, no matter what you think of a particular elected official or candidate, to please be peaceful, be respectful, and refrain from violence. Our thoughts and our prayers certainly go out to the victim, who was tragically lost his life. He was a father, he was a firefighter, he was a public safety official. They go out to his family as well, and indeed, they go out to the family of Donald Trump, who was also shot as well. So this election cycle and every election cycle, when you talk to your friends, your family, your neighbors, perfect strangers, people at work, please do so in a civil and reasonable manner and understand and know that violence of any type, politically or otherwise, is not condoned and is not okay. Thank you. We will begin tonight with a special announcement and presentation from our Parks and Recreation Director, Kyle Mulligan.
Good evening, council. I wanted to speak on a few things regarding some Parks Recreation stuff in Westland. First, I want to extend a huge thank you and appreciation to all the families and volunteers who came out for the city's Family Field Day on Saturday. It was super fun. I know the kids and parents were having a blast. We look forward to more of these events as we try to grow these community engagement-type events. We started back in February with bowling, and we've seen more attendees come each time. Also, thank you again to all of them. Also, wanted to speak on any of the miscommunication from outside sources regarding access to the H-2O zone on Saturday. With the attempt to have as many families attend Field Day as possible, we offered up free access to the attendees of the event. Although this might not have been made entirely clear on the event flyer, I understand how it could have been misinterpreted for some. The idea was to invite families out for a fun day at the Field Day, and after that, they'd be able to gain access to the Spray Park as a thank you for coming out. Again, we'll make sure that this is clear on future events. But I did speak with my Rangers that day, and there was only one family who inquired about the misinformation in the late afternoon. But again, thank you to everyone who came out, and we look forward to more of these events in the future. I also wanted to plug the new Westland Parks and Recreation Facebook page. It was new as of a couple weeks ago, and we're trying to grow that following. So please give us a follow and share all of our posts to see what's going on the rest of this summer and into fall. There are still signups available on the Recreation Portal for leagues. Art camps and classes start up soon, and all of our events are located on there as well, so you can see what's coming up next in Parks and Recreation. Our next community engagement event is going to be Grandparents and Me Day here at City Hall on Saturday, September 7th. More details will follow. And then one last note this evening. Please come out to the Farmer's Market this Thursday for our next special event. It is Kids' Day at the Westland Farmer's Market. Face painting, kid goodie bags, and tons of activities for the kids await, so please be sure to bring out the whole family for this Thursday. The market runs from 3:00 to 7:00 o'clock, and please stick around after. It will be Week Two of our Summer Concert Series featuring Alexander Zancheck. We look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Mulligan. We will now have a special announcement and presentation from our city clerk, Richard LeBlanc.
Thank you, Mr. President. Most of our precincts, our voting precincts, are located within school buildings, predominantly the Wayne Westland Community School District. They notified us, I'd say a couple of months ago, that a number of their buildings are undergoing renovation, which means that we will be temporarily moving people within certain buildings to other buildings for the August election only. It's strictly a one-time thing. Many of you know, though, that this is not the only time this has happened, as other buildings were renovated. So I'd like to briefly go through a list, like to let you know what we're doing to comply with necessary information communicated to our voters. If you vote in Wildwood School for the August election only, you'll be voting at Hamilton Elementary, which is sort of around the corner. If you vote at Stottlemyre School, you'll also be voting at Hamilton School, which is a little further away, but again, around the corner. If you vote at Adams Middle School, you'll be voting for the August election only at the Jefferson Barnes Community Vitality Center, which is sort of behind it, behind the other school. And lastly, if you vote at Petey Graham Elementary School for the August election, you'll be voting at Stevenson Middle School, which is sort of down the street. So with the cooperation and help of the school district, we were able to accommodate these necessary renovation projects in terms of voting. The state requires that we provide notice via a postcard or other written instrument to every voter affected. So, many people have already received these postcards, but a question might be, well, there's five of us in my home that vote, and we had five postcards. Well, state requires that we notify every voter with a postcard. Pretty much, that's what the state says. What we've done to also enhance this opportunity to inform voters, we will have signage at both of the affected locations. We'll have signage placed about a week before the election at the schools that are going to be closed. We'll have signage posted at the fill-in school district. We will also be conducting a public service announcement that'll be cable cast. And lastly, of course, if you choose to vote by absentee, or in this election, if you choose to vote early during the early voting, nine-day early voting period, none of this affects you. So, if you're one of those folks that say, "I don't want to figure out where I'm going to vote," vote absentee. If you say, "I don't really want to vote absentee," come here to City Hall, beginning the Saturday, the second Saturday before the election, through the Sunday immediately previous to the election. So there's two weekends and a full week. You could early vote. So with that, lastly, I'd say if there are any questions about where you vote, you can go to M-I-V-I-C dot com, MVIC, that is the state site that'll fill in all the blanks for you, or you can call our office at 467-3185, and a staff member will help you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Finally, our final special announcement and presentation tonight will come from our Police Chief, Kyle Dolly.
Thank you, Council President and Council. Also, thank you for coming an hour early for the new swearing-in, for the new two new officers earlier. Appreciate the support. Today, I'm here to introduce the two community police officers that are veteran Westland Police Officers. As I continue to look for ways to police our city in a more efficient manner, I've made some changes to the community police unit with bringing this back to a two-officer assignment. I firmly believe in the brilliant principles of policing, with emphasis on maintaining relationships with the public while reinforcing the tradition that the police are the public and the public are the police. The selection process was extremely competitive. We had 16 officers put in for these positions. These two officers, Plofton and Napi, have proven themselves, they're proving their excellent work ethic, and they distinguish themselves from all others. You will see them in neighborhoods, parks, schools. They'll be at council meetings, as well as city and the police department events, or sponsored events, and the interaction with the communication with the residents is paramount. Their goal is to learn from the residents' quality of life concerns and solve problems. Some problems can be corrected through education, others through mediation, and when necessary, through strict law enforcement. The goal is to solve the problems for the residents. With that, I'd like to take a minute to introduce these two officers. Officer Cameron Plofton, he moved to Westland when he was 14, and after graduating high school, earned an associate degree from Schoolcraft College, and then a bachelor's degree from Eastern Michigan University in Public Safety Administration. Cameron joined our agency as a police service aide in 2017, and was promoted in 2019, and we sent him to the Police Academy at the Wayne County Regional. Prior to this new assignment, Cameron is a field training officer for all of our new officers, and was on the night shift the whole time. Officer Kaylee Napi, am I right? She moved to Michigan from Texas in 2015. After graduating from Plymouth High, Kaylee attended University of Michigan Dearborn, where she graduated with honors, earning a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and psychology with a minor in English. While in school, Kaylee was hired as a Westland Police Service aide, and after two years was promoted and sent to the Basic Police Academy at Wayne County Regional. In the academy, Kaylee was awarded Top Defensive Tactics and the Iron Woman Award for top physical training. Kaylee is a department instructor in defensive tactics and a current evidence technician. If you just want to see a few words?
Hello, everybody. Officer Plofton and I are very excited to get involved with the community and, you know, to get out there and stuff. So if you see us on the road, don't be afraid to say hi and introduce yourselves and address any type of concerns that you guys have with the community, because we're all, you know, here to help, and we're just very excited for this opportunity. So, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, well, that concludes all of our special announcements and presentations. We will now move on to questions or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow members of the public at the beginning of the meeting to address the council regarding items that are on tonight's agenda. Questions asked may be responded to during the agenda item following a motion and support from your city council. On the agenda, is there anyone on my left? On the agenda, is there anyone on my right? Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on tonight's agenda? Yes, Mr. Warren.
Good evening. Under Consent Calendar, Item Number N. The approval of the request from the products of Annapolis Park to waive the cost of the park. And we, as members of the Southeast Westland Homeowners Association, support this waiving of this fee. Because in the creation of this park in 1965 through 67, the then Council of Nankin Township and the beginning Council of the City of Westland, when the Southeast Homeowners Association approached that council with a $25,000 contract to provide amenities in that vacant area which Chase Stottlemyre had donated to the City of Westland, the $25,000 to build a tennis court and a basketball court, the council refused. And then the homeowners came back with a stronger protest in regards to having those amenities in the park. And the council at that time approved $7,500, hoping that the community would fail. The community pulled together without a contractor, with citizens in their community, and built that basketball court and those tennis courts, which you see out there now in that park. And that's why the park is important to us. And that's why we support those descendants of those individuals who created the park, because the only one left now out of that building is Mac Mayfield. He's the last survivor of the construction of that park. So we support the approval of that request so that the community can still come together under the banner of those early persons who created that park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on tonight's business agenda?
I see one on here. I'm just looking at the fire department here. The AFF local 1279 collects funds for the boot. I think it's great that they do that. Be careful on Ford Road, that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Okay, Q. Ray? Is there anyone else wishing to speak on tonight's business agenda? Anyone else in the audience? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we will close comments on the agenda and move to the consent calendar. Is there a motion? There's a motion by Councilwoman Pro Tem Sampi and supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. Is there any changes to the consent calendar? Yes, Pro Tem?
Thank you, Council President. So I am looking on Consent Calendar to move Items C, H, and G into new business.
There's motion on the floor to move Items C, H, and G to new business. Is there support? Supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. So any discussion?
Thank you. So some of-
Oh, you're right. No discussion. I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's just that, which is the motion's support. Okay. We do have a vote on it now, and then, yep. Okay, roll call.
Do we?
We got a, this is on the amendment for Items C, J, H. Then we'll go back to the original motion for the consent calendar.
And then if I want to move something-
If you have something else, then you can make that motion then. Yes. So this is a motion to remove Items C, H, and G off the consent calendar to new business items.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski is absent, excused. Councilman Wishart.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampi.
Yes.
President McDermott.
Yes.
Motion passes. C, H, and G will be new business 1A.
Back to the original motion, the consent calendar. Are there any additional changes to the consent calendar, Councilman Hornbuckle?
Yes, I would like to move Consent Item E.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion move Consent Calendar Item E to new business by Councilman Hornbuckle, supported by Pro Tem Sampi. Our roll call, please.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski is absent, excused. Councilman Wishart.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampi.
Yes.
President McDermott.
Yes.
An approved Item E will now become new business 1B.
Okay, back to the original motion on the consent calendar. Are there any additional changes to the consent calendar? Councilwoman, do you have something? Okay. Any additional changes to consent calendar? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries as amended.
Council has approved the following Consent Calendar items. Approval of request from Westland Professional Firefighters to collect funds via a Fill-the-Boot Charity Drive for MDA July 25 through July 27, 2024, and August 15 through August 17, 2024, at the corner of Wayne Road and Ford Road. Approval of request from Eloise Asylum on Michigan Avenue for a public entertainment license to host a summer concert series event at the location, August 3, 2024, 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. Approval of purchase of one patrol vehicle for the police department, amount not to exceed $20,000. Approval of master agreement with the City of Westland and DTE Electric Company for municipal street lighting on Middle Belt Road in the amount $44,347.84. Approval of workers' compensation third-party administrator agreement with Comprehensive Risk Services LLC. Agreement shall be for a three-year period ending June 30, 2027. Adoption of budget amendments for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2025. This item was introduced July 1, 2024. Introduction of Ordinance 198A5, an ordinance to amend the Westland Code of Ordinances, Chapter 22, by amending Article 10 entitled "Fences." Introduction of Ordinance 29W452, an ordinance to amend the master fee schedule pertaining to the planning and building departments. Adoption of Ground Emergency Medical Transportation Services Resolution. Approval of request from the products of Annapolis Park to waive the administrative fees for rental of a pavilion at Stottlemyre Park to host a picnic event, August 10, 2024, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Adoption of City of Westland Turn the Town Teal Proclamation to proclaim the month of September National Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Westland. Last item approved on the consent calendar. Adoption of resolution declaring the last week of August each year Women of Westland Week in the City of Westland. Moving to payment of voucher.
Is there a motion? Is there support? There's a motion by Councilwoman Bowman, supported by Councilman Hart. Is there any discussion from the maker? Any discussion from the supporter? Is there any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries. Passes.
Moving to new business, Item 1. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting held July 1, 2024.
Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Wishart. Is there any discussion from the maker? Any discussion from the supporter? Did you have discussion? Oh, okay. Do you have, if you have discussion, go ahead. What's- Yes, yep, we will. Roll call.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Abstained.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski is absent, excused. Councilman Wishart.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampi.
Yes.
President McDermott.
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, I'm going to unwind this stuff for a minute. Now, I did say when the items were moved, it would be 1A. Reality is, there are three separate items. So unless there are objections, there'll be 1A, B, and C, and the item that was going to be Item 1B will be Item 1D. Everybody get it? Any objections? Okay. So, the first item, let's see. Item C. Approval of request from La La Bounce LLC, doing business as Fun Box Detroit, for a temporary event permit to host an event in the parking lot of the Westland Shopping Center, August 2, 2024, Friday through Sunday only, and Monday, September 2 through September 14, 2024, with the hours of operation on Fridays, 3:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m., Saturday and Sunday, 11:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m.
Is there a motion?
So much.
Motion by Pro Tem Sampi, supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. Is there discussion from the maker?
Yes. Council President, is a petitioner here to ask questions in the audience?
Yes, if the petitioner would like to come up.
Hi, how are you?
Very good. Good evening, council members. Thank you for having me tonight.
Well, thank you for being here. I just had some questions for clarification purposes. People that are watching at home may not have an opportunity to see everything that you offer. Just to maybe give you a minute to talk a little bit more about your business, and then I do have some follow-up questions, I'm assuming, if they don't get answered.
Absolutely. We're a franchise that actually started operation in California. I'm originally born and raised in southeast Detroit, so that as a resident currently in Texas, I thought of bringing the world's largest bounce park to my home state and allow the children, really, of southeast Detroit to have a safe and fun environment to bounce for an hour and a half on the world's biggest bounce park. It's outdoor, give them a chance to disconnect from the screen. It's outdoor, give them a chance to disconnect from the screens, come have fun, and like I said, in a clean, sanitized, safe environment with their parents. Adults are allowed in there. It's completely secure from all sides. We do have fire and emergency exits. And really, we've been operation, myself, as a franchisee, we have rights in Oklahoma City and Michigan. I've been operating since last year. This will be our fifth campaign, so we have it very well down, not only kind of the team and that manages the operation, but as well, me and my wife are there every weekend. We do have two young children as well that bounce on that big bounce park. And we have some social media and more information that we can provide to the residents if they have, you know, if they'd like any information. But one thing I'll leave everybody with is this, is we're, one of our founders actually grew up in a foster system, and with every campaign, any franchisees nationwide, from the west coast to the east coast, opening weekend and closing weekend, we sponsor a foster charity local, where a portion of every sale proceeds goes to that local foster charity to kind of really go to the, our mantra, which is, you know, we want our own kids to have safe and fun time, but at the same time, let's give back to those kids in need.
Thank you. So just a follow-up question. I don't have young children. I have a grandson, but he's not enough to go. But based on the security that you have, little ones can run out quickly. Is this gated in? Is it, do you guys hit people lock around?
Correct. It's essentially completely gated all the way around. There's going to be emergency gates on east side for public safety, of course, as well as the back, but those are locked at all times during operating hours. So there's one entry, one exit into the perimeter of the fence. And there's also one entry and one exit to essentially two main routes, the big park, and there's an obstacle course, right? And any access to the back of the park where there's, you know, wiring, generator, anything like that, that's also closed off and monitored on a regular basis, just to make sure nobody wanders in the back. The only time you'll ever see anybody back there is would be our employees whisking any kids that were inside the park out of the emergency exit, just in case something had happened. We have to whisk all the attendees out of the park as soon as possible.
Okay. And then is this purely like a blow up then, like a blow up bounce house, or is it like carnival games, just to get-
Correct. Uh, no, it's purely just a blow, it's a blow up bounce house, right? It's one big piece and one a smaller, I mentioned, smaller piece. And we inflate about an hour before we begin operations, and then we turn it off about half hour after we end operations. And everything just deflates within about five, 10 minutes. It inflates within about five, 10 minutes as well. And then we have essentially like a turf area in front of the park, right? And we have like kid games, toddler games for the young ones, right? Bubbles, different things like that. We have a character that inflates and, you know, one of employees gets in there and dances with the kids, and we do tug of war. Our employees try to have fun with the kids inside and outside the park. And then we also have, you know, smaller concession stand where we sell like waters and Gatorades in case of, you know, heat and different things like that, so.
Okay. And just my last question is, will you have some type of medical or on-site medical care if, you know, bumps and bruises? I'm just thinking of kids flying in there.
Absolutely.
So you'll have on-site medical care if needed?
So we have first aid kits in three different stations. So in the front, in the middle, like in the concession stand, and at the corner of the park, just in case, you know, generally a mom comes up or a kid comes up and, you know, they get a little bump or bruise or bleeding, so we give them, you know, we usually ask the parents to apply for a save, right? And if we ever have any sort of really an injury, an emergency that requires 911, we call 911 and we leave, you know, that emergency care to the professionals.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Sounds like it's going to be a great time for the little ones. I will be in support of this. I just wanted a little clarification, like I said, those that are watching at home or on YouTube at a later date, sometimes they like to know about these things. So I appreciate your time in answering my questions. Now, yield it to my colleagues if they have any.
Thank you. Pro Tem, is there any question? Yes. Councilman.
Uh, thank you. This, uh, I'm excited about this. This is really great. Definitely will take my kids to this as well. But I do have some questions. You know, this is a great attraction. My concern is food trucks coming into these parking lots. Do you, from your experience, do you see that a lot at, say, Oakland Mall, I believe is your other location here?
No. Generally, if food trucks want to do a collaboration, they reach out to us and, you know, with the mall or with the city's authorities. I mean, if we're approved for that, we would say okay. But generally, we, we're parked in front of the mall. We are a business that actually increases the mall traffic by about 10 to 20%, depending on the location. So we tend to try to help the mall kind of increase the foot traffic inside the mall, right? So whether it's a food court or anything like that. So we generally refrain from bringing food trucks, mostly as we are in front of a mall. We'd like to have sort of mutually beneficial relationship.
And the last question I have, I think this might be for the clerk, maybe. I did notice that the liability insurance expire on the first. Is there something that says that we'll have an updated one before, I think, the second?
It's an administrative issue, and administration will correspond in whichever ways with the applicant to verify that they are currently insured at the time the event is to occur.
I think it just-
It's conditional.
And just to kind of clarify that, because I had a question from Councilman over there. We will obtain that the next 24 hours and will provide that to somebody on your team that already reached out, actually.
Great, great. Is there any other discussion, Councilwoman?
I actually, I did come up with one. And I don't know if this is required, so I don't know necessarily where it goes, but are background checks required for any of the employees since, with this?
Um, the, anybody kind of in the team lead or manager position. Generally, our employees are high school or college age, most of them, but generally require that for the folks that manage the park.
Any additional questions from the council?
I do have one question for you. Is there any kind of check-in or wristband system so you know who's in there, when they're in there, and when they're out? Because we've had, in the past, the kind of carnival, so to speak, in Westland where it's gotten out of hand, and I think our, you know, our police department can tell you that there was no kind of check-in or checkout system. It was just people flooding to a particular area to go to an event, and then one thing leads to another, and all of a sudden, Westland Police Department has to be there to respond to a situation. You mentioned that this is going to be, you know, a gated-in area, so are you doing any kind of like check-in or wristbanding system for families and folks that are going to be attending?
Yeah, no, we do. So very good question. So our system works like this. So we have, when somebody purchases our ticket online, and 90% of our tickets are purchased online, you get an email with a QR code. So you bring in that QR code, and we, people kind of line up outside the park, and we check people in before their sessions start. Our sessions are about 80 minutes. So let's just say the first session started at noon and ends at 1:30. So we start clearing people around 1:20, and we completely clear out the park. First, we start with the inside is the inflatables, and then as the parents and the kids collect their shoes, they walk out, it's completely clear. So we sanitize, we clean, we inside the park, the tables, all that stuff. And then, in the same time, we have the front team checking in everybody with those QR codes. Some people lost a QR code, we can look you up in the system, check you in, and if you don't buy a ticket, we can sell you a ticket at the front. Our capacity is 350 people, right? We rarely reach that. Maybe a couple of sessions in the opening weekend, but generally, we are hovering around 150 to 200 people. So we check people in, and those are, people are allowed. So there's going to be some walk-ups, 10, 20 people per session, but generally, there's no free flow of people, because one, it's the security of the families and the children's side, and then, like you said, maintaining, you know, public order, right? Because things can get out of control, and there's no way to verify who paid and who didn't. So if you pay, we'll check you in in the front. And in many ways, we are thinking about a slight tweak to the system. I don't think we're going to implement it here, but I'll mention it just in case. Right now, everybody over the age of three pays. So we're potentially working on a slight tweak where if you are a parent and you don't want to bounce, right? But you want to go in with, you want to pay for your kids, we might change that and make that okay. Whereas, you know, if you change your mind, you can go inside the inflatable. But really, it's about not forcing parents that don't want to bounce to pay for a ticket. So that's something corporate is rolling out for us, but I, they're thinking, I don't know how exactly the details of that, and if we can get that set up potentially before we do our, hopefully, our goal of opening weekend of August 2nd, so.
Great. Thank you very much. Any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, motion carries. Congratulations.
New business, item 1B. Approval of intergovernmental agreement with Wayne County for improvements at Hicks Park, including the construction of up to six pickleball courts and a new side parking drive located at 6847 Hicks, in the amount of $131,778.
Is there a motion?
Some would.
Motion by Councilman Hart, to support? Supported by Councilwoman Baumann. Is there any discussion from the maker?
Not this time.
Okay. Any discussion from the supporter? Is there any additional discussion from the council? Yes.
Thank you. So I just have a few questions. I'm not sure if this would be to administration or to Director Mulligan in regards to the improvements of Hicks Park and the pickleball courts. I'm not sure who should take this. Okay. So currently, we don't have pickleball courts there. So can you explain a little bit more of the construction project and then in terms of the drive? Because I think it's a circle drive right now, so are we just tearing down trees to construct the pickleball courts? Can you maybe fill us in a little bit more about the plan?
Yeah, through the chair. So a little bit of background on the Wayne County village money. This is Commissioner Glenn Anderson allocates park village funding to his various cities each year. Last year, he approached me. They're changing the way their allocations go. Commissioner Anderson works with Livonia and Westland. Generally, in historicals, we've gotten around that $54,000 range annually. They've now changed that to give us more every other year so that we can do a larger project. So just in the five years that I've been here, this village money has been used for Voss Park, Stottlemyre Park, Hubbard Park, J.C. Park, and Carrato Park for just various park improvements throughout the city. To answer your question on the trees, the plan is not to eliminate a ton of trees. The location of the new pickleball courts would go on where the existing parking lot is, move the fence that's on Hicks Road back towards that area and create side parking so that it is visible from the road. So no trees would be taken away to install the amenities. And the reason we're deciding on pickleball courts is just to get traction in there. Not a lot of people utilize Hicks Park. We want this to be a park that people, you know, go to and recreate, and I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. So to follow up, what was your reasoning for selecting Hicks Park and maybe not moving into the south end for some pickleball courts out that way? I'm just kind of curious on why that park was chosen.
So Hicks Park has not seen any improvements in a while. What we try to do is utilize the village money throughout the entire city. Stottlemyre got a new play structure, I believe it was four or five years ago. We've also got the ARPA money that you guys allocated for various parks on the southeast end as well. So we selected Hicks Park just with the idea and hope that it brings more people to that park.
Okay, thank you, Kyle, on that. I, I'm not excited about the Hicks Park. I would like to see the investment of pickleballs. I know you mentioned in the south end, we've done some structures, but I would really love to see the continuation of recreation out that way as well. To be fair and balanced, we've done a lot in the north end with pickleball and the placement. So I'm not a fan, unfortunately, of Hicks Park and development, so unfortunately, I would like to see this revisited, maybe. But I'm, I mean, I'm a fan of the idea, but not the placement.
If I could respond to that through the chair. Wayne County as well, just so everybody is aware, the Vinoy Dorsey Park is getting a large upgrade that will include some pickleball courts on that south end as well, just south of Palmer. But if the council's looking to improve, you know, at Stottlemyre Park or Firefighters Park, and they're looking for additional amenities, please let us know. We can always try to put something together. This is just to get the paperwork started. This is the very early-stage process of this. Basically, once council approves the project description, we have two years to complete the project. So once you guys approve it, then we'd be contacting engineers and contractors to get the ball rolling on that, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Kyle. Yeah, I would love to see firefighters get some attention, and I would love to see even Firefighters Park get pickleball courts as well, too. So again, it's not that I don't support the particular concept of pickleball courts, it's more the location. So I don't know if the administration has plans for pickleball courts there or even additional recreation, like you had stated, but I just would be curious if we could go back to the drawing board on this.
Okay. Any additional discussion from the council?
I do have something I wanted to say. To Director Mulligan's point, you know, we've put a lot of investment in areas all over the city and parks, all over the city this last year. Council obviously knows, the community knows, some of the ARPA allocations that we put in at nine different parks, and Hicks Park was not one of them. And it's been a park that I think, since I've been on council now, going on four and a half years, we haven't put a dime into in the last four and a half years. So yes, there is work to be done at parks all across the city, and we're doing that work. And I think this is the opportunity for folks who live by Hicks Park to get to see something new and nice going over at Hicks Park. And, you know, pickleball's been a craze, and I think it's something that's not slowing down anytime soon. So I'm, you know, happy to see this investment at Hicks Park, because it's one of the parks that was not on the original list of nine that was getting invested in. So I'm pleased to see the administration making this investment over at Hicks Park.
All right. Any additional discussion from the council? Yes.
Yeah, I'll just echo what you said. I mean, we've taught, we've done a lot of work across a lot of different parks, and Hicks Park is, since I've been on council, a little bit longer than everybody here, we haven't put anything in Hicks outside of replacing the sign out front when we did all the park signage, right? So it's Hicks's turn. It does need some improvement. There's really nothing there. It's got the nature trail, but a lot of people want to enjoy it, and I think putting the courts in there is the right step to introduce everybody to the park and all of its nature and its surroundings as well. So I'll be supportive of the pickleball project at Hicks Park. Thank you.
Great. Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Yes. Roll call.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilman Wishart.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampi.
No.
President McDermott.
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving to new business, item 1C, formerly known as H. Approval of intergovernmental agreement between the City of Westland and Wayne County in order to accept a grant award in the amount of $2.5 million for the Nankin Square Project.
Is there a motion?
Some would.
Is there support?
No support.
Motion by Councilwoman Baumann, supported by Councilman Hart. Is there any discussion from the maker? Okay. Any discussion from the supporter?
Not this time.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion? Yes.
All right. Thank you so much. I know that Director Garza's here to probably represent the project. This has been something that I know has been long in the works, and I believe tomorrow, if I'm not mistaken, there's going to be, I don't know, groundbreaking? I think that's what it is. But maybe if you can explain a little bit more, Director Garza, the plans for the project. It's been quite some time, I think, that we've gotten a full recap. In the packet, we do see information about it, but those at home or those watching may not have maybe the most up-to-date, because I know it's changed quite a bit. So wanted to take this time to give you opportunity to speak.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilwoman. Through the Council President, the Nankin Square Park, which actually just sits, adjacent to the City Hall property between Garden City Hospital and the fire station. This is a investment from the city's Tifa, also the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, the county, and this grant, and then also the federal government, and a quarter-million-dollar grant, which will construct a park right next door here. Again, this is a catalyst for economic growth for the area. When we looked at this project, when it came in in November, it was underway. When we looked at this project, when it came in in November, it was underway. Looking at how we continued it now, it's taken very similar form to what it had before. There is some bocce ball courts being proposed for this location, different health equipment, nature play areas. There will not be any type of children's play area because with the three-million-dollar investment at Tann Park, it was kind of duplicative to look at that. So there's a lot of different things. Also, the band shelf structure, which is the amphitheater, which will be part of the Nankin Square Park as well. So there's quite a bit of different things. The overall investment of this project is about twelve million dollars. And this, again, is funded by all levels of government in form of this grant as well, the two-point-five million from the county. So I'm very excited about the potential for this over the next year and looking forward to what this will add to the park structure within the city of Westland. And also, before I forget, the groundbreaking actually was rescheduled, Councilwoman and council, for later next month, which we will send a reminder out to all of the members of the council.
Okay. Thank you so much, Director Garza, on that. So just asking a few questions for follow-up. It looks like we're going to be, I guess, building out, so it's more of a boulevard. That's the vision, where food trucks would go, an additional setup possibly of like a play area or games. So do you, is that going to be extending out Central City? Not Central City, I guess that would be Nankin Boulevard? Is there any work that's going to be done with that, or is it just extending out with the current land? Can you provide a little bit more background on that?
Sure, absolutely. Absolutely. Through the council president, through the councilwoman, I think the plan going forward is Nankin Boulevard will undergo a complete makeover. So it will be replaced along with expanding portions of Nankin Boulevard to accommodate food trucks that would be allowed on the outer portions within the park. So we will expand that out. The boulevard will still exist. It'll be redone as well. So there will be a major overhaul of Nankin Boulevard as part of this project.
Okay. I figure that was the case considering, looking at the renderings that was provided in the packet, that it would have to be an extension out of actual Nankin Boulevard. So, and then my questions for you are completed, so thank you. To Director Mulligan, is this something that your team of park rangers are going to be taking over and, I guess, managing that park as well, too?
Through the chair, obviously, once the park is created, my department will be responsible for a lot of the programming and events that take place over there. Some rangers will be needed. It is yet to be determined exactly what that staffing will be required, but I would assume, you know, evenings, weekends, things like that. If park rangers are needed over there, the department will absolutely staff it if necessary.
Okay. Thank you so much. And to the administration, I'm not sure who wants to take this, is our DPS employee is going to be the one that manage the update and maintenance of the park? I don't know who that's. To administration, to mayor, to director?
Yes, through the chair. DPS will not maintain this park.
Okay. Thank you. Do we know who will?
I think Alex can answer that, but just like any major parks, I believe they will contract with a private developer.
Okay.
I mean, a private maintenance person.
Private maintenance, okay.
And just to give a update on that as well, since Tifa, we are amending the Tifa plan as well to allow for expenditures to be allowed for this park as well. So programming, Director Mulligan, we're allowing for different programming to take place and also for maintenance as well.
Okay. Thank you, Director Garza. So the programming to confirm, the programming that takes place will be under Tifa's budget? And then in terms of the maintenance of the park, it would be also under Tifa? So Tifa would actually absorb the cost? It wouldn't be any additional costs that would be needed out of our budget of any sort?
That is correct, Councilwoman. Tifa will amend their plan, and we are asking them to amend it to include programming, all programming for the park.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you so much. That answers all my questions. Again, this is a very large investment. I know it's three-point-nine acres, so I just wanted to make sure that our residents understand and that we're all clear with council members. So thank you so much.
Councilman Hart.
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair to Director Garza. So I remember when the council originally sat down and we talked about Nankin Square Park, and I think the original price tag we got was around four million when we first talked about it, and then it got to six. So now, there's the tremendous scope creep and bloat on this to get to twelve and a half million. I'll also remember that council, we had a pretty good study session. We had a lot of people in here, some really good renderings, drawings, even a virtual fly-through. So I'm looking at the packet, and I might have missed it, so help me out. I've been busy today in the past week. I only see one photo sim that's in the packet as opposed to the huge document that we've got. So I really don't have anything to stare and compare from council's originally shown and to what I've got is a pretty generic photo sim going on here. So I'll be frank, I mean, let me back up by say that I'm supportive of this project, and I have been because I believe in the economic driver that we're trying to bring into the Shop and Dine District as well as our city center. This is important for us to do because as we continue to market the old city hall property on Ford Road, we have to transition our event space to somewhere else. So let me say that, first of all. I'm supportive of it. I'm in agreement that it needs to be done. Blues brews has got to go somewhere when we finally sell that property. However, when I had a nice thick book right here that was six million, and now I've got a grainy photo sim that's twelve and a half, I'm not seeing the value add here. I've got some concerns. Council President, I move to postpone to the next meeting, providing more detailed information.
There is a mo— okay. Yep, there's a motion on the photo postponed, this item to the next meeting, by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Bowman. Is there any discussion on the motion to postpone?
Not at the moment.
Any discussion? Is there any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing and hearing none, motion carries.
Moving to item one D, formerly known as item E on the consent calendar. Approval of master agreement with the city of Westland and DTE Electric Company for municipal street lighting in the Fairfield subdivision in the amount twenty-five thousand, three-hundred thirty-two dollars, thirty-six cents.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Hornbuckle, is there support?
Support.
Supported by Councilman Wishart. Is there any discussion from the maker? Yes.
I'm definitely happy to see this finally make it this far. It's been a long time coming. I've been pushing this for just a year, but that community's been pushing it much, much longer than I have. So today, I want to make sure that we get it right. We're here, let's make sure we get it right. And when I look at this package, I'm not for sure who this question goes to, but it says eight lights installed, but they have some, like a kind of photo placement, and it looked like that illustrates maybe twelve. So are we getting eight there or twelve in this area?
Through the chair, we have representatives from DTE here, and I believe Raissa, could you please answer the councilman question regarding this?
If you want to come forward, we can.
Yeah, but they're from DTE.
Yes.
Not doing that.
Oh, no.
Welcome.
We haven't seen you.
I'll be polite.
Hello. So would be about eight lights, yeah. So this is just the measurement that we usually do from one pole to another. So that's why you see several dots there.
Yeah, so do those lights represent where a light is actually, light poles going to go?
Yeah, the blue ones, the blue dots represent the lights, and the red ones is just the feet points.
Okay, so if I'm looking at the blue dots, it still doesn't amount to eight.
Yeah.
I see one blue.
Two.
Three. Two.
Leave that out, like seven new streetlights.
There's one plus seven.
Three, four.
It'll equate to eight total.
You see eight blue lights?
There'll be, there's one, Ramsey said there's seven more going in.
Right.
And the contract said seven new streetlights.
Seven, eight.
Correct. But I was just looking at the mapping they have here.
Right.
And she clarified that the blue dots, not the red dots, are where they're going. When you look at it, it looks like the blue dots are where the poles are going. So I wanted to, you know, it was illustrating more on the red dots, so just wanted to clear up that. So they're getting eight total lights. That's correct?
Eight lights.
That is correct.
All set, councilman?
Yep, that's all I have. Thank you for getting this to this point. Just want to make sure it's done right.
And we just want to thank you guys for the opportunity to continue to serve your lighting needs.
Pro Tem, did you have something? Did you have something? Eric, did you have something? Your light popped on.
Nope.
Okay. All right. Is there any other discussion?
The electricity worked?
Yeah. Yes. Is there any additional discussion from the council? Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries.
All right. New business, item two. Minutes of the study session held, approval of minutes of the study session held June two, I'm sorry, July—
What the heck?
All right. There's a bit of an error here. Hope it's not on yours. June twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Support.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Bowman, supported by Pro Tem Sampe. Is there any discussion from the maker? Any discussion from the supporter? Any additional discussion?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Abstained due to absence.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Abstained due to absence?
Hart, no, he was, Hart is abstained.
Oh, it says you were absent. All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Rakowski is absent, excused. Councilman Wishart?
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampe?
Yes.
President McDermott?
Yes.
Motion passes, and the actual document will be corrected to reflect those in attendance. New business, item three. Confirmation of appointment of Mayor Kevin Coleman as delegate to the Central Wayne County Sanitation Authority. The appointment would become effective immediately and expire June thirty, two thousand twenty-five.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Wishart. Is there any discussion from the maker? Any discussion from the supporter? Any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries.
New business, item four. Confirmation of reappointment of Steve Smith as the alternate delegate to the Central Wayne County Sanitation Authority for a one-year term, term effective July one, two thousand twenty-three through June thirty, two thousand twenty-five.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Wishart. Any discussion from the maker?
Subject to correction, term effective July first, twenty twenty-four.
Twenty-four, yep.
Any additional discussion?
None.
Any discussion from the supporter? Any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries.
New business, item five. Nominations for delegate to the annual MML convention to be held September eleventh through thirteen, two thousand twenty-four, Grand Hotel Mackinac.
I'd like to nominate—
We ought to have the motion first, don't we?
Oh, no.
Oh, we ought to have the nomination.
It's got to be recognized.
Yep.
Now it messed me up.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to nominate Pro Tem Melissa Sampe.
Mr. Clerk, I'd like to nominate Councilwoman Emily Bowman.
Motion to close nominations.
There's a motion to close nominations?
Support.
Supported by Councilman Hart. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, nominations are closed.
So, last time I used this box, I made a commitment. Notice I didn't say promise. I would try to find a new box. Didn't realize until gathering items for this meeting, I might need a box today. So I'm going to put a couple of names, I'm going to put them in the trusty box that has served us so well for so long. Two slips of paper, one says Emily Bowman, the other says Melissa Sampe. I'm going to toss them into a box. Give them a little bit of a shake. The order in which I pull them out will be the order in which they are voted per your own council policies and procedures. First item out of the hat, Melissa Sampe. Second item out of the hat, Emily Bowman. Mr. President, again, per your own rules, we simply will go down via roll call to vote in order the applicant, rather, the nominees. If a person voted gets more than four votes, it will not be necessary to carry on beyond that.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Okay. This is to acknowledge designation of delegate to the annual MML convention as being Melissa Sampe. Councilwoman Bowman.
No.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski is absent, excused. Councilman Wishart?
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampe?
Yes.
President McDermott?
Yes.
Having received five affirmative votes, Melissa Sampe is the delegate to the annual That being item six, we will move to item seven. Nominations for alternate in the event the delegate is unable to attend the annual MML convention to be held September eleventh through thirteen, two thousand twenty-four at the Grand Hotel on Mackinac Island. Nominations.
Council President, I wish to nominate Councilwoman Bowman.
There's a nomination for Councilwoman Emily Bowman from Councilman Hart. Are there any other nominations? Yes.
Council President, I wish to nominate Councilman Delano Hornbuckle.
There's a nomination for Councilman Delano Hornbuckle from Pro Tem Sampe. Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to close nominations.
There's a motion to close nominations.
Support.
There's support. There's support. Motion to close nominations, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, nominations are closed.
Emily Bowman, Delano Hornbuckle, two names go into the hat. Item eight, regarding the names in order. First name pulled, Emily Bowman. Second name pulled, Delano Hornbuckle.
Roll call, please.
Okay, so the first vote for the designation of an alternate to the MML convention, and the affirmative for Emily Bowman. Councilwoman Bowman.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
No.
Councilwoman Rakowski is absent, excused. Councilman Wishart?
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampe?
No.
President McDermott?
Yes.
Having received four affirmative votes, Emily Bowman, Councilwoman Bowman is designated as the alternate to the convention. We will not move to the vote on the other nominee. New business. Excuse me, item nine. Approval of request from Detroit Sports Dome for a special one-day liquor license to serve alcohol at the Eloise Asylum Summer Concert Series Event at their location on August three, two thousand twenty-four, five P.M. to eleven P.M.
Some.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Wishart. Is there any discussion from the maker?
Not this time.
Okay, any discussion from the supporter? Any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries.
New business, item ten. Adoption of prepared resolution authorizing the city to apply for a special one-day liquor license for beer sales at the Friendship Center Oktoberfest to be held at their location on October four, two thousand twenty-four, twelve PM until two PM.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Wishart. Any discussion from the maker?
No.
Okay, any discussion from the supporter? Any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries.
New business, item eleven. Adoption of prepared resolution to amend the application for a special two-day liquor license for beer and liquor sales at the Blues Brews and Barbecue Event on August two and three, two thousand twenty-four, to allow serving to begin at twelve PM on Saturday, August three, as opposed to the original application, which stated three PM.
There is a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. So any discussion from the maker? Any discussion from the supporter? Any additional discussion from the council? I do have a question to Director Garza. Uh, this year with the Blues Brews and Barbecue, we've obviously moved up the alcohol sales. Can you just speak a little bit about why that is and some of the, you know, kind of new and exciting things that we're gonna be offering earlier this year that we want to, you know, have that beer and wine sale to be a little bit earlier than normal?
Sure. Uh, thank you, Council President and his honorable body. I wanted to just say the expansion of this, uh, Blues Brews and Barbecue this year is actually due to our new partnership, uh, with John Witz, uh, who's actually, uh, founder of, uh, the event that they hold in, in Royal Oak, which is arts, pizza, and eats. Um, so we're, we're expanding the programming for, for Blues this year, which includes many, many other national acts, uh, that will be performing on, on the two different stages that will be, uh, constructed this year, uh, during the event, so, um, so that allows for more time for, um, for these folks to engage in, in, in these different acts that we've attracted over, over the two-day period. Um, also to note, for August second will be the Drone Show this year, and August third will be the fireworks, so those two events will be, um, or attractions will be two different nights this year, as opposed to one night.
Great, thank you. Sounds like it's gonna be bigger and better than ever.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it. Is there any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries. Alright, we will now move on to public comment on the agenda and, uh, and public comment. Everyone wishing to speak before the council shall do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly conduct of the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. Speaker can ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may respond during the speaker's allotted amount of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the three minutes is up or the person is done speaking, whichever comes first. Public comment, is there anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? Yes, Ms. Dale. Yep.
Oh, short comment. Ruth Dale Westland, good evening, everybody. I'd like to thank Caitlin Smith at the Westland, Westland, at the William P. Faust Westland Public Library. She is, uh, editor of Westland Rights twenty twenty-four. I don't know if any of you... The book began, according to the writing on the back, fifteen years ago in two thousand nine in celebration of National Poetry Month, and it's now been expanded. And they have, uh, the poems, short stories, and essays. So again, I'd like to thank Caitlin Smith. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dale. Is there anyone else, public comment on my right? Right.
Well, this time I tried to beat the clock, it won't be three minutes. Like it'll last, but hey, sometimes I got a lot of stuff to talk about when I'm not here. So anyway, I was, this is a question for later on, is the Blues and the Blues volunteers, how do you go about if you want to be a volunteer? Is it online? I'm interested. I know there's some people I've been talking to are interested too. So, and, um, Westland, I always rate support with the Westland, heard about that today. I think it's great for community connections what they're doing, and I think it helps the community, get to know the people, get to help the people with their questions, maybe someone might need help in something or, or anything, even people with abilities or mobile, just being, you know, I know they're respectful and their leadership is very good out there, so I support that a hundred percent. I think it's great. I'm gonna get a chance to talk to them too, once in a while, because I'm always out in Westland, always into the community. In the month of August, I'm getting things ready right now for my birthday VIP list. I'm gonna have a little, some people are gonna be coming to it, so, and I have a, you know, by group where I work, I'm setting up a party with them too, so Ray's gonna be busy in the month of August. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Is there any, yes, Ms. Wilson?
I'm not gonna talk about Speed Hump because I owe the mayor something before I can talk about them again. What I'm gonna ta- what I want to talk about is this allocation of money for the parks. An Apple's Park is seventy years old. That park, Stottlemyre, was, the property was donated, as Mr. Warren said, we got seventy-five hundred dollars, and we had to do that in vouchers. Between the time that those vouchers were turned in and that basketball court and those things were done, we got virtually nothing down there for seventy years. So, in the last five years, we got a gazebo, we got an upgraded shelter, and we've got a playscape that's smaller than the ones in the nearest kids' park at a school. But, everybody's talking about pickleball. We would like to get something down there like that, you know, bring us something. Like I always told you guys, I'm going to advocate for my community. Yes, we are an older community, but we have young families moving in now too. You know that, chief. Give us something. I mean, if they're gonna get six pickleball courts, how come they just can't get two? We get, you know, four. We've got a big lot in Stottlemyre Park behind those houses, same way where, how it is over at Norway. Everything stops when it hits Norway. What happened to Stottlemyre? What happened to Firefighters Park? We'd like to see something over there.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on my right? Yes.
Good evening, council. Mayor, chiefs, uh, just a quick, I didn't get to speak at the consent calendar about the fill-the-boot coming up. Uh, the two dates, end of July and the middle of August. I'm gonna try to drag my guys out for a second weekend this year. Uh, we raised just under fourteen thousand dollars last year in three days, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, uh, at one intersection. That intersection is amazing, uh, the generosity shown year after year, um, by everybody passing through, some people stopping us on the sidewalks to throw money in our boot, uh, continues to amaze me. I've been involved with MDA now for just under twenty years. Um, I've seen firsthand at boot camps and summer camps, the changes that the dozen or so medications that have been approved, uh, and created over that, that time, um, has changed the lives of children. Children at boot camps that couldn't hold their neck up or needed, uh, support while they were sleeping so they didn't stop breathing now are able to walk with a walker, uh, and literally much more enjoyable life, longer lives. Uh, it also, um, does not just affect the children. ALS or Lou Gehrig's disease affects many people in their middle ages, that is a neuromuscular disease, um, also that MDA works on research for new medications, so I'm hoping this year we can raise, uh, more money than we did last year. That's why I put out the second date. Firefighters get pretty competitive across the state and across the nation, so we've got some northern Michigan locals that are doubling our amounts, so I need to, uh, raise some more. So thanks again to the council, to the mayor, fire administration for the continued support.
Excellent, thank you. Is there anyone else on my left wishing to speak? Yes, Ms. Statchow.
Uh, hi, hi, good evening. Uh, Deanna Statchow, uh, mayor, council, staff. Uh, just had a question in regards to this bounce fun box. Was there a mention of maybe cameras, uh, being, uh, installed in the area for security as well? I think that might be something for us possibly to even look into, uh, that, uh, so that in case something does happen, that, uh, we would have that as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on my right wishing to speak, public comment? Anyone else on my left? Mr. Warren?
Okay, good evening again, Art Warren. This time I'm speaking to you as a precinct delegate, which covers Fairfield Glades. Uh, fit the phenomenon of Fairfield Glades not having any lights is the same issue with Courier Street. Uh, when those developments came in, somehow the city failed to get lights in there. Courier Street is just recently, a few years ago, had streetlights put in. And the Lacy Street issue with lights. Uh, and it's been about fifteen years before a lot of you got here, that, that light issue was, uh, gone. Lacy Street probably dropped the ball talking about it publicly, but Ms. Wilson and I, we brought it up in budget sessions. Lacy Street Lights, and kinda glad they're going in now. Two, in regards to communities, you have a Norway Citizens Council, and also have a South East Westland Homeowners Council. And before anything is built in our beloved parks, could you please come and talk to the citizens of those particular two groups? And maybe you can get some input on what needs to actually be built there, and then you would have some sense of what, what it would cost. Uh, I know Ms. Wilson talked about pickleball, of course, that might be nice, but please come and, and talk to the citizens there. Okay, and finally through the chair to the mayor. And this question of the digital sign boards in front of the fire station three. You said that you had had a conversation in regards to it, but you didn't give any results in regards to that conversation of what you decided that, whether you should put a board there or not. So I'd like to know whether you're continuing that conversation or whether you've decided to put a digital board there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak, public comment? Anyone else in the audience? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we will move on to comments from the administration.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everybody. Uh, Mr. Warren, we are gonna continue to have that conversation and, uh, look at getting quotes and, and a cost estimate for signage at that, that, uh, fire station. I agree, it, it would be nice to have that there, and we will continue to pursue that. Little bit of, uh, confusion on, uh, our, um, interg- intergovernmental agreement, uh, for the Nankin Square Park. I don't usually admonish the council, and I won't tonight, uh, but I am a little bit concerned, uh, with the decision to, uh, postpone that item because it was a, uh, us accepting a grant award from Wayne County for two-point-five million dollars, which is a pretty good chunk of change. The funding stack from Tifa was always six to eight million, that's where it was when I came in as mayor back in November of last year. Uh, we had to pursue that two-point-five million from Wayne County, uh, very aggressively. We went down to, uh, the Guardian Building in Detroit and presented to their economic development team. I had, uh, conversations with the deputy county executive and county executive's office to try to get, uh, them to consider awarding us that grant. Uh, we talked to our US Representative Rashida Tlaib to get the quarter million dollars. And then we talked to the state quite a bit, uh, and that happened last year to get the, the money from the state, from the MEDC. So every level of government is funding this project, and the budget has not changed. Uh, so, I'm a little bit confused, and I'd like to give you this opportunity. You said you needed more information, and you voted to postpone the item. The item that you voted to postpone, and I'll read it for you, item H. Approval of intergovernmental agreement between the city of Westland and Wayne County in order to accept a grant award in the amount of two-point-five million dollars. So I'm, I'm not sure what, what, uh, further information we can provide, and I'd like to give you this opportunity to ask questions.
I mean, I think during our council comments, if anybody has anything specific, they can bring them up during the council comments.
Well, I'd, I'd like for each council member to, to, to take that opportunity when, when you have the chance. And I am a little confused as why we didn't receive a phone call or an email or any questions about this prior to the meeting.
I think each council member can address that during their, their council comments. It, you know, wasn't my intention to see it be postponed, but I think we can address that during our council comments there.
Okay. So, uh, I'll move on from that, but, uh, a little bit puzzling on the council's part tonight, so I'm just gonna make that clear to you guys. I, I'd like to proceed and, uh, congratulate the two officers that were sworn in tonight. Uh, Officer Lalonde and Officer Sanner, uh, who are both police service aides. Uh, I'd also like to thank the council for confirming right, my reappointment as delegate to the Central Wayne County Sanitation Authority. I know that we had a, uh, groundbreaking schedule for tomorrow for the Nankin Square, uh, project. Uh, due to delays at Wayne County, uh, they asked us to postpone it. It looks like it's gonna be postponed even further now. My office did send out a notice of cancellation, but, uh, our, our T-director is aware that we had, uh, some technical issues with our email system, and that some, some people may not have received it. So I just want to let you know that once we, uh, get everything approved and hopefully approval from the city council that we can get that date scheduled and have everybody invited there. I do have a, another listening tour stop coming up. It's tomorrow, five-thirty PM at Corrato Park. And so I invite everybody to come, including the city council. Uh, Thursday is our farmer's market. It's Kids Day from three to seven PM. There'll be music, face painting, goodie bags, and more activities for kids. It'll be great. I wanna, uh, congratulate Kyle Mulligan, our great parks director, for all his hard work on Saturday with the Family Field Day I was able to attend. Uh, a lot of great volunteers there. I was really impressed, and I just thought it was an awesome event, so great work, Kyle, and your team. We have our biggest event of the year coming up, Blues Brews and Barbecue. It'll be Friday, August second, and Saturday, August third. This year's event will be bigger and better than ever. Drone show on Friday night and fireworks on Saturday night. I'd also like to congratulate our newest business, uh, that had a, uh, grand opening with a rebranding, which is Hunter's Pizza Chicken and Subs at Hunter and Wayne Road. Uh, some of us were able to go out and attend the grand opening. It was a good time, and, uh, congratulations to the family, uh, for all their, their years of success here in our city. I think I got everything on my list there. Do want to shout out two former mayors of Westland, a friend of mine, Gene McKinney, and Trav Griffin, who I ran into both of them over the weekend. Just wanted to say thank you for the, the kind words of encouragement and support to me as mayor. Um, I know I expressed a little frustration tonight, but, um, when other levels of government are, are, uh, providing big grants like that, I think that we should have, um, open arms to them, and, uh, no disrespect to the city council, but I, I didn't get any requests for further information prior to the meeting tonight, so it did seem a little strange. Also, there was a question through the chair to Director Garza about how people can volunteer for Blues Brews and Barbecue, so if we could give him the opportunity to answer that question, and that's all for me tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council President, um, through the chair, just to respond about the, how to, how civic groups can volunteer for Blues Brews and Barbecue. Um, Director, um, Devin Adams is taking a request for volunteering for Blues this year, so any request for volunteering for the event can go through Director Adams directly. It's on the website as well as, as Craig mentioned as well, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there any comments this evening from the city attorney?
Nothing from the city attorney's office.
Okay, thank you. We will now begin council comments with Councilman Hornbuckle. Yes.
Uh, I'm gonna start off, uh, saying thank you, everyone, for coming out today. Thank you to our ladies- to our ladies in man in blue. Congratulations to the new officers. Also, I want to encourage people to come out to fill the booths. Make sure you support the cause. It's a really great program, so make sure you do that. Also, I want to thank council in supporting the lights for a Phil- 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 great. Sorry. Phil- Phil Glaze. You know, like I said, it was a long time coming, and I know people in the audience can fill in the gap here, but it's about time that this got done. So thank you, everyone, for that support. Appreciate that. Also, to comment on the mayor's request here, it sounded like my colleagues did ask for more information, and no one really chimed up and said, hey, this is just to receive. This is not the planning or approval of groundbreaking. So, you know, that's kind of why I felt that it was okay to postpone that there. I could be wrong, but there was an opportunity where someone else could have chimed in and said, hey, hey, guys, it happened before where someone chimed in and just said, hey, this is just to accept a grant award. That's my statement on that one. If anyone wants to reach out to me, feel free to follow me on Facebook, Councilman Delano Hornbuckle, or call or text me at 734-224-2747. Thank you, and have a blessed day.
Thank you, Councilman. We will now hear from Councilman Wishart.
The Council President, I just have one student in news, so be my first wife in her early.
Very first kid, due early December, so I'm super happy and excited to announce that. So, and she's been a true brother of her first trimester.
Okay, great. We will now hear from Councilwoman Bowman.
All right, thank you. So first, I do want to say congratulations to our two new police officers who were sworn in today, in the ceremony today, as well as our community officers as well. So thank you for doing this. I'm excited about that. So I want to do that. I also want to thank the council for selecting me for an alternate to the MML, Michigan Municipal League. I've actually, ever since I actually first was elected, the first thing I did was went to their newly elected training. So I've jumped into that, and I've made a point to make sure I go to pretty much everything they've done. And they have something called the Elected Officers Academy, where you actually earn to be a better councilperson, to be a better servant for your city or town, wherever it is, because it's around the whole state. And I've made sure that I've been available to every single one of those, and I'm actually, I'm getting really close to earning the first level of education for that. So I'm actually really excited about that. So I've been really trying to represent Westland in these areas. So again, I want to thank everybody for selecting me to be the alternate for the convention in September, so I've worked hard for that. I want to make a mention about the weekend as well, with the shooting of former President Trump. And I just want to add to that, because something that's just weighed on my heart, especially after that, and just even this month, I personally have been around a number of funerals for people from ages from 3 until 92. So there's a lot of, I've just had, this has been a really tough month for me with a lot of that. And this weekend really got me thinking how important it is that we take care of what's going on in our heads. And I want to speak about that, because you don't have to have an illness. You do not have to be diagnosed with anything. But if you are stressed out, if you are just at your wit's end, that's mental health. That's not taking care of your mental health, and that is a really important, as someone who experienced a mother with dementia and a grandfather who was in a hospital, I just, I'm very aware of what happens when you don't take care of your mental health, and you do end up with an illness. And I just want people to think about this, is take that break, reach out to somebody, talk to somebody. There are so many, there really are a lot of resources, and even, you know, having our community officers now, that's part of the resource, is that people can actually reach out, and it's not, it's okay to say, I'm having a tough time. Because when I see somebody, and I've said this for years and years, is that when I come into your space, I don't know what just happened to you. I don't know what you're going through. I don't know if you just experienced something traumatic, if someone you loved just passed away. I don't know what you experiences. And likewise, you don't know what I just experienced. And if we come at each other, we don't just comment down, and that includes that rhetoric. And I guess someone wants to speak to that, because I just want people to know that there's resources available. I know, and I'm blanking right now, there's a number, help me out, if someone could help me out, what's that number for mental health? Is it nine? Is it 988? 988, thank you. So 988 is a number that people can reach out to and talk to somebody. There's somebody there for them. I've been involved with some local suicide prevention areas. I've been very involved in these things, and that's why I speak from a person who has a lot of care, because just take care of it. You just, just take care of your mental health. And that includes your physical health, includes eating right, includes drinking some water, just some minor things. I just want to encourage it, because it really got me really thinking this weekend, and it just, we just can't get to that point where we take it out on somebody. I don't care who it is. And obviously, I think we would have had a very different weekend if that had been a successful attempt. So I just want to make that comment with that. So anyway, I'm going to end, though, on another one. First, actually, I wanted to speak to what Mayor Coleman had referenced, on the question of the intergovernment. I apologize, I did not ask what the repercussions were of postponing. Usually, I try to ask those things, like, okay, if we postpone this, what is the repercussion of that? What does that mean? What does that look like? And I wish I had actually asked that question, and I apologize I didn't. For me, the reason for the supporting of the postponement had more to do with, yes, there were some questions. I have been part of the conversation of saying, what does this look like? And I want to support the whole concept, and I've had some conversations with Director Garza as well. It's just, there does seem to be some questions about what this is looking like. And it did seem a little weak in what we were actually doing today versus, so if I made a mistake by doing this, I want to recognize that. But it does, I do have the question about what does that mean that we've postponed it? I believe it will show up on the next agenda. But at the same time, I mean, are we in some time issue that we have a concern with? So I don't know if that should be answered before I'm done. I do, I want to finish mine, but should I finish mine first, and then answer?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. So I want to end on a different note. So just because I actually had the opportunity to go to Inspire Theater, and I know some other people in the audience as well did, and got to see Gilligan's Island, the musical. And a friend of mine was skippered. It was really fun to see him. I didn't know that he was a singer. I didn't know he actually works for the Livonia Schools, and I've known him for a number of years. And it was just a really neat musical. It was just so much fun to see. So if you missed the sold-out shows for Gilligan's Island, the musical, I'm sorry. Unfortunately, what I would say is, we've really got to support our Inspire Theater. And next up is Noises Off. I actually made a point to go out and look at the movie. There's a movie with Christopher Reeve, so if you want to see the movie and see a little bit about what that's about. And their auditions are coming up, so they're going to, the performances will be in October of 2024. The auditions will be August 5th and 6th. So if you've got some dramatic acting skill, or even just want to see if you do, and want to show up for the auditions, it's a community auditions. They're available to everyone. I actually had my son already auditioned for one place, so just, I'm encouraging people to, you know, get involved in that, and I'm really excited about that. So I want to add on a really nice positive note about the arts and culture in our city. So other than that, I'm done. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mayor, do you want to just, real quick, do a question?
Thank you. Yeah, first of all, I want to just correct your statement. We have not received any questions from city council that have not been answered. So I want to make that clear right away. And then also, the repercussions of postponing this is delaying the Wayne County Commission's vote to award this grant. So we have to ask the city council here to approve this IGA. Once they do that, the Wayne County Commission can vote and formally grant us the grant, and then we can accept it. So that's the order it has to work in. So it's just a further delay of the project at this point. So that's the answer I think you were looking for.
All right, thank you. We'll now hear from Councilman Hart.
Thank you, Council President. So I guess we'll just delve right into it. When we talked about, you know, the postponement, I'll speak from my perspective. Again, like I said before, when this started, it was half of this new number that we're seeing. And we did have, again, a lot of members from the public came out. We had virtual fly-throughs of this, and we had a price tag, you know. And at that time, help me out, it was about $8 million was that price tag. And then I remember I did meet with Director Garza soon after he, you know, he started here, and he says, well, you know, this project we're working on, because I had asked, how's this coming along? Well, you know, we're about $12.5 million. I says, well, you know, we're going to either have to put that on a diet, or we're just going to see, where's the scope creep coming from? So we really hadn't heard much about it until this. Now, frankly, I'm totally supportive of spending other governments' money, but it's still all the people's money at some point, right? And when we also talk about, well, I'll use some comments that have been made before in this room, why should we spend our money when we could spend somebody else's money? Well, now it's turned into, we're going to spend all of our money, and we're going to spend their money. Okay, so instead of me having $10 million, now I got 12.5. Well, now, the new scope's 12.5. How did that happen? Why did not the TIFA contribution reduce by 2.5 if the IGA for Wayne County's coming in at 2.5? So it sounds like the scope is just meeting the asked funding stack, right? And I just have some questions about it. At any time, anybody else could have challenged that. There was some discussion, and there was no discussion. So that's why I asked to push that off a couple weeks, because I think there's some questions here. A lot of it changed. I mean, again, how did the scope get where it's at? Why didn't we just reduce the TIFA's allotment to support this project with the bringing in of the other outside governmental agency cash? So what are we getting for our money, and are we putting it at the right place? I mean, we're going to spend more on this park based off the new dollar that I've heard of than our new fire station. Okay, so I'm just trying to go ahead and quantify that and qualify that at the same time. So there's a lot of questions. And apparently, I'm not the only one, because the rest of my colleagues kind of felt the same way. We really didn't know what was going on, answer some questions. So we were all in the dark. Now, if it's just Councilman Hart, you know, just off-base, hey, I'm human, anybody else can be off-base. But if I have singularity here with the rest of my council, and the rest of them agree that, hey, let's just push this off, there's a lot of things we don't know. And I just want to answer a couple of quick questions. If it delays the project three weeks, but the council knows better what's going on, and we can communicate, then we have a better understanding, then I think it was three weeks well-spent, and there's no need to kick rocks over it. All right? So it's more of a reflection on the council didn't know than the entire council didn't know. It wasn't just like Councilman Hart wasn't paying attention to an email. Okay? So we got some time before the next meeting, a plethora of time. We could all break out individually, meet with Director Garza individually, and go through it. So these are things we can get done, but I have some questions, and I know a couple of my colleagues have questions. And I know the public has questions as well, because they've asked me what's going on with the park. And when I come back and say, oh, by the way, it's $12.5 million now, they're going to go, well, really? You know, what are we getting now for the new $4.5 million that you said last time what it was going to cost? So a lot of questions, and I think it's probably all valid, but I don't have the answers to it. If I don't have the answers to it, it looks like my colleagues don't have the answers to it either. So I just want to make sure we have all the answers before we move forward. So that's why I made the motion to push it off, and apparently, again, all of my colleagues agreed with that. So gives us some time. We can go and talk. Delay it three weeks. I'm sure the county will understand that we just had some questions. If you want to throw the council under the bus, then fine, throw the council under the bus. But at least, I'm going to go ahead and have the answers that I think the council wanted, so we just have a little bit more clarity and a little more readiness. So that's my comments, Council President. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Recognize Director Garza since he was named, please.
Yes, Director.
Thank you, Council President. Just wanted, just to follow up with the councilmen, and I appreciate the conversation we had on the project when I first started. But I just want to be clear, when I started in November in this role with the administration, the price tag on this was $12.5 million, when I started in November of last year. That has not changed. We have documentation back to April of last year, when the $12.5 million was, that was the price tag on it. My predecessor, under her, it was $12.5 million. So this hasn't changed since the new administration started. This price tag has been $12.5 million. I'm not sure prior to that what that looked like. However, I just also want to note that these dollars that were actually awarded in this grant, which are ARPA dollars, are highly sought-after dollars from all of the communities. This is the only project that Westland is awarded in the final round of ARPA dollars from the county. So I just want to just mention that these are highly sought-after dollars from other communities. Of course, we will do whatever council and administration directs us to do. However, I just want to just caution folks that these dollars are very much sought after from other communities, and there is a timetable for which they have to be expended by the county.
Thank you. For Tim.
Thank you, Council President. I hope everyone's doing well. Had a nice 4th of July holiday. I know that I did. Holidays seem to be flying by as the year does. I know it had been mentioned by Council President, but I think that the assassination attempt, it's been condemned by a lot of political leaders, all sides of the political spectrum, is, you know, I think it was rough. It hit a lot of us personally as politicians, again, whether you support former President Trump or not. The culture of violence in the United States, not only on the political trail, not only outside of Michigan, but also here locally, I've seen a lot of divide. I actually spoke with the mayor about just some concerns. There's a lot of concerns being in this political role, even whether you serve on a board of commission or in this spot. It's, you know, it's very unsettling. Yeah, I think we should not encourage violence. We need to step back and take a look, too, about personal attacks and bullying and intimidation and such, too. Just the glorification of violence and where the country's heading, it's very unsettling. A lot of people ask us why we choose to be in politics, and a lot of people get out because of the fear of what they're faced with. So I just wanted to kind of mention this, too, is, you know, it is something that I've been thinking about a lot as well. It had been brought up, but I really hope that, you know, after, you know, after that incident, that people really take a deep look, and if you are struggling with something, as mentioned, you know, reach out, whether you're struggling with something personally, or, you know, perhaps you're struggling with something at home, or maybe people in your life. But it is really unsettling what happened, and again, very unnerving. So in more of the positive lights of just some thank yous, I wanted to jump in. Thank you, Kyle, for bringing that up and the correction on the miscommunications. I had shared the city's posts, and I had a couple residents attack me saying, you know, you have no idea what's going on. But anytime that you have anything like that, any information, feel free to send it to city council. We'll send it out. I just did a copy and paste of what was shared, and, you know, a couple individuals said, you know, you have no idea what you're talking about. But again, we do get information, so thank you for, you know, owning up to that. Sometimes it does happen, but I appreciate you mentioning that as well, too. I wanted to congratulate our new community officers, Kaylee and Cameron. I know that's going to be a new role. You have big shoes to fill. Phil, can't even talk today. Officer Kelly did a really great job in the community. I talked with chief just about different things that are going to go on. So if you have any ideas about events or anything, there's a lot of great things that I think had happened previously with our charity games and such, too. So I know that the community really loves them. So I'm hoping they don't go away, because I think that they're really well-received in the community. I wanted to thank my colleagues for your confirmation as an MLM delegate. I think that the conference is very worthy. I also have tried to attend things virtually, also in person. So I'm excited for that event. Councilwoman Rakowski's son is celebrating his, I think, 10th birthday, so she's not here today, but happy birthday to her son AJ. And I wanted to also mention, too, that pickleball, the reason why, again, I already talked about this, but the reason why I did vote no is, as mentioned by a few people today, is I would like to see recreation and opportunities extended outside of what we traditionally may focus attention on. So I think maybe looking at, and I know we've done a lot, but sometimes a scaled-down version in certain areas, too. So it's not that I'm against it. I'm sure it's going to be fantastic. But again, you know, my focus was maybe seeing how we can spread pickleball out in other places of the city. Mr. Warren had mentioned about the signage, so I actually emailed administration. I brought it up at my meeting with the mayor and council president about the signage. We're looking at about $30,000 to $40,000 for the investment of the new digital sign. So I think that's something that city council is going to take to our ARPA meeting, to just have ARPA dollars cover it. But I also agreed I- just have ARPA dollars cover it. But I also agreed, as I brought it up with the mayor, I think that we need to have that communication tool, and that investment would be very worthy. For Director Garza, my, my question, I guess, or ask, is that there's been, as mentioned, like ribbon cuttings in the community. Sometimes council members, we, we can't come in the middle of the day, or maybe like at 3:30, because we work till 4:30 or 5:00. I know it's not ideal, but maybe if we're able to speak with businesses. I've had a hard time sneaking out because of where my office is, to be there by 3:30, I got to leave by, you know, 2:45, 3 o'clock. Is maybe if we're able to just push them back a little bit later, if possible, or maybe try to stagger them. I think that would garner a little bit more attendance as council members, as, as maybe some council members can't sneak out really early. In terms of what the mayor had asked, I actually was very in support of this. I think that with the changing of hands, as mentioned, the communication, for me, it had not been, it's not that it hadn't been great. I just hadn't seen a rendering updated. That's why I asked you so many questions today. So I'm very much in support of this. If it is delaying funds, or necessary funds that we need, that we're going to miss deadlines, I would just ask my colleagues if we can pull together a special meeting, if necessary. We don't want to lose funds. Again, as my colleagues had mentioned, that they wanted to just push back and get more information. I'm comfortable. I know that the price had started at 4 million, and then it increased at 12 million. I think in the switching of the roles, administration, also in your role as well, too, obviously your predecessor, there might have been communication that was lost, not on purpose, just for natural cause of, you know, people switching roles. So it would be great, whatever you have, perhaps you send it out, any new renderings or anything like that. I am in support of the project, as mentioned. I know I gave you a hard time at budget sessions, like, we just need a pool and a recreation center. But, you know, I know there's opportunity for that. But I know that this is going to garner some traffic and activity and potential for Ford Road and the visioning that we're doing, and, you know, moving activity out this way. So that city center district is obviously in our plan, so I do support it. But, you know, if anything you have, you want to share, again, if necessary, if we need to have a special meeting, I would support that if, if needed. Also wanted to thank my colleagues, as Councilman Hornbuckle had mentioned about the Fairfield subdivision. This is something we brought up in our study session. I'm very, very, very happy that it can be picked up in a different manner. But I know it's well, well, well overdue, which is why we proposed it, our study session. So in terms of follow-up, too, I wanted to, just one more plug for our fire department. The dates that the MDA Fill the Boot event, July 25th and 27th, August 15th through the 17th, and I know it is something that is very important for not only your department, for us as well. So if there's anything that you need from us, or promotion, or if you have a graphic that you want us to share out with the dates, we know the intersections, Ford Road and Wayne Road, but this is a very worthy cause. So thank you for promoting it. I want to do one more plug for it, because it's, it's coming up rather soon. So until then, our next meeting, so we have three weeks in between our next meeting. Monday, August 5th, the mayor did promote Blues Brew and Barbecue. I hope to see everyone out there. I'm really, really, really excited with this new format. So drone show on Friday, fireworks on Saturday, a lot of great volunteers, a lot of great food, a lot of great fun and music as well. So I'm, I'm looking forward to it. But our next meeting will be Monday, August 5th at 7:00 PM. If you need to reach out to me, 734-637-2078. Again, as mentioned, be safe and kind with one another, and we'll see you in three weeks.
Thank you, Partem. First off, I want to start by congratulating our two new officers who were sworn in tonight, and welcome them to the Westland Police Department. We wish them a long, safe, and successful career. And then congratulate our two new community police officers. I think it's really nice to have two community police officers opposed to one. Officer Kelly did a fantastic job in that role over the last, what, three years, I believe, Marjorie's been in that role? And so I know that our two new community police officers will do equal or better than what Officer Kelly brought. There's more resources now into that, that program. And I know that, you know, folks want to see officers out and engaged at events. So it really humanizes our police department and puts, you know, names with faces. So I'm really excited to see the expansion of community policing. I know you guys will do a wonderful job, and thank you, Chief, for expanding that. With regards to the park issue tonight, I just want to reiterate that my phone is always on. Sometimes it takes a little bit longer for me to get back to folks if they have a question or concern, given that I work from, you know, 8:39 in the morning till whenever I have my last interview or last email I have to send from my job. But if folks do have, you know, a question that they want answered prior to the meeting, please reach out. And I will reach out to the administration to try to get that answer beforehand. On that, I want people to be able to make informed decisions here as a council. But, you know, please do reach out. I know I can't always get back right away. Sometimes texts take a few hours or so to get back, or have to return a call, because I am at work or I'm on the phone as a recruiter all day. But please, you know, if folks have questions beforehand, please reach out to me. I want to make sure everybody gets the answers they need. With regards to the Fill the Boot campaign, looks like it's going to be another successful year this year for the fire department. So thank you, congratulations on being, you know, such a huge success each and every year. And thanks for doing this again. We know that it's a really great campaign for the MDA. So really excited that you, you guys are going to be out there doing it again. Congratulations to my two colleagues, who are going to be the delegate and the alternate delegate for the MML Conference. So to Partem Sampe and Councilman Baumann, hope it is going to be a great MML conference and convention. You know, I know I made mention of this, you know, at the start of the meeting, but I really think that there's more that needs to be said. And I, and I want to say this as my own personal comments, independent of speaking for the entire council. The horrific actions that we saw on Saturday are nothing new in America. And unfortunately, all too often, violence on our streets towards our people and political violence has become normalized and accepted. We have had multiple presidents, from Abraham Lincoln, to James Garfield, to William McKinley, to Jack Kennedy, who were assassinated. And other presidents, Teddy Roosevelt, Ronald Reagan, who were shot at. Teddy Roosevelt, in fact, was shot and gave and continued to give a speech while he was shot. We've had members of Congress from Gabby Giffords in front of a supermarket, Steve Scalise at a baseball game, the husband of Nancy Pelosi beaten over the head with a hammer, when Speaker Pelosi was the target of that heinous attack. But we know, based on the tragic and violent history, that it isn't just politicians that have become the attacks of political violence. In 1963, civil rights activist Medgar Evers was gunned down outside of his home. In 1968, Dr. King and Bobby Kennedy, for God's sakes, Bobby Kennedy talked about Dr. King's assassination. And then himself, months later, in a hotel in Los Angeles, was gunned down. Fred Hampton in 1969, in Chicago. And, you know, there are many more that, who haven't been mentioned. And I think it's no secret, those of you that follow me on, on social media, and those of you that have talked to me and engaged in me one-on-one, know my political leanings, know who I do and don't support. This is not about me coming up to say who I do and don't endorse. I think you know my feelings on the former president, if you've talked to me. But political violence, from any side of the aisle, towards any ideology, towards any human being, is absolutely unacceptable. Whether you do or don't support President Trump, whether you do or don't support President Biden, or Nancy Pelosi, or Gabby Giffords, or the governor who was the victim of an alleged kidnapping plot, whether you do or don't support those people, it is wholly unacceptable in this system of democracy, in a free and fair country, where, yes, we have flaws. And yes, there is a heck of a lot of progress that still needs to be made for marginalized communities and people all across this country, where rights need to be expanded, where civil rights and voting rights have been eroded, and we need to win those rights back. But to have that discourse over those issues, to have that discussion, it can be civil. And sometimes, yes, it can be heated. I know, Lord knows, at dinner tables, with family members, with friends, on my Facebook page, I've gotten a little heated, and sometimes a little carried away myself. And I need to look inward and be introspective about that, and know where I can make changes. But violence towards individuals is never acceptable, is never the answer. And people should be free to express their political opinion. They should be free to attend a rally for President Trump or otherwise, without the threat of violence, without the fear of being intimidated or attacked. That is not okay. And as elected officials, and I think as human beings, we all need to work to cool the temperature down. We all need to work to make sure that everyone has the right to have their voice heard. And we don't all have to agree on the opinions that people espouse. Lord knows, with the former president, there's a million and one that I don't agree with. And Lord knows, I've been highly critical of those things, and things that he has said. And, and frankly, violence that he has incited with his rhetoric towards marginalized communities in this country, towards other politicians. And that is not acceptable either. And that should be condemned, whether it is what happened on the Capitol on January 6th, interrupting a peaceful transfer of power, comments that were made in light of the Paul Pelosi attack, or the kidnapping of Governor Whitmer. That is not acceptable from the former president, just as any threat of violence is not acceptable from any elected official, any person running for office, or frankly, any one of us as human beings. I think we all have the opportunity to use this moment, and frankly, any of the aforementioned moments that should have been used. Bobby Kennedy, Medgar Evers, Dr. King, Fred Hampton, the kidnapping plot for, against Governor Whitmer, January 6th, Steve Scalise's shooting at a congressional baseball game. We have the opportunity to do better. I have that opportunity, I know, to do better. We also have the opportunity to talk about things that affect people in these situations, and ask the serious questions, and have the tough conversations about why these events happen. Whether it is funding and supporting resources for mental health, as my colleague mentioned, whether it is gun safety reform, and looking at the types of people that are owning firearms, and having red flag laws, tough background checks, mental health screenings, things that can prevent firearms from getting in the hands of the wrong people. We need to have those conversations, because this isn't just a siloed issue. And I think that it needs to be said and said again. It needs to be said months from now, when this event is out of people's minds, and we're focused on something else in the news cycle. The horrific acts of this weekend, and the political violence that we have seen all too often in this country's past, has become a stain in our nation's history, and we all collectively need to say enough. And that everybody, no matter your background, Democrat or Republican, progressive, conservative, libertarian, it doesn't matter. You have the right to express your opinion. You have the right to attend a rally. You have the right to go to an event and support who you want and the people that are at that event. Whether it is an elected official, a candidate running for office, or just attendees, have the right to feel safe and free from political violence. So I hope that we can all use this moment to continue to strongly disagree and speak out against the policies, and the issues, and the ideals, and the candidates that we do and don't support. Support the issues you vehemently believe in, and the candidates you believe in, and campaign for them, and vote for them, and oppose the ones you don't. That is the hallmark of American democracy, and the hallmark of a free country with free speech, liberty, and justice for all of our people. But please, if you catch yourself, and this includes me as well, getting heated or getting carried away, or you see a friend or a family member, or somebody that you're engaged with, and their rhetoric turns to violent rhetoric, to where they wish to do harm against people, please report that. Please work with that person to help calm them down and understand that violence to any human being in the political arena or otherwise is not acceptable, and is not okay. And with that, is our motion to adjourn.